Also debuting Chevrolet's Colorado midsize pickup. When local gas prices go up, know the Colorado has the best fuel economy of any midsize vehicle. Price tag also around 30 grand.
We find midsize customers often use a vehicle to commute during the week and then use it for recreational activities or around home activities on the weekend. And you know, midsize pickup is perfect for that and we think the Colorado is a be a great choice for people in Los Angeles.
For you movie star types with money to spare, here's the Jaguar F-Type coupe. Price tag around 99 grand. Also, the Mercedes AMG GT, which actually starred in the Gran Turismo Six racing game for PlayStation 3. L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti welcomes them all.
We look forward to many, many more years of, yes, embracing the fact that we are the car capital of the world, but showing people that that title brings with it a leadership responsibility.
And in a city that takes great pride in at least trying to become more environmentally friendly, special kudos go out to the Honda Accord, named 2014's Green Car of the Year.
Accord is a very diverse lineup, you know, we have a coupe, we have sedan, we have a plug-in hybrid, and then right behind us here is the 50 mile per gallon Accord hybrid.
So whether you're after fuel efficiency or pure fantasy, you'll likely find something to rev your engine at the L.A. Convention Center. Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The L.A. Auto Show takes place at the L.A. Convention Center through December 1st. We'll have more details also later in Things to Do. Police are asking anyone who may have been victimized by a registered sex offender targeting teen girls and women to come forward. More personnel change this time at the port, and a cousin of the giraffe welcomes a baby for the first time at the L.A. Zoo.
North Hollywood detectives have arrested 30-year-old Irvine Perez, who they say committed sexual battery against women in the San Fernando Valley. Authorities say Perez, who is a registered sex offender, would exit his car, grope his victims, or expose himself to them, and flee.
During these assaults, Perez was driving a 2006 gray Nissan Xterra SUV. We're asking students to be vigilant, and if walking to school should consider walking in pairs because we truly believe in safety in numbers.
If you believe you have also been victimized by Perez, you are asked to contact the LAPD. Gary Lee Moore, who has served as Los Angeles City Engineer and General Manager of the city's Bureau of Engineering for the past decade, has started his duties as interim Executive Director of the Port of Los Angeles. Moore was appointed to the post by Mayor Eric Garcetti. Moore replaces Geraldine Nats, who served as the port's Executive Director for almost eight years before announcing her retirement in October. Moore's first order of business will be a trip to Japan where he will meet with Japanese customers and port officials. The hats flew in the air as yet another class of recruits joined the ranks of the LAPD. Police Chief Charlie Beck talked to the graduates about the importance of maintaining the public's trust as they go out into L.A.'s streets.
We do not maintain order and force the law solely through strength of arms. We maintain it through the willing cooperation of the vast majority of this population. And in every contact you make, every person you talk to, you have to remember that.
This graduating class has five females among the 41 graduating officers, and close to half are Hispanic. The Los Angeles Zoo recently announced its first-ever okapi birth at the end of August. The male calf was born on August 26th at 9:00 a.m. to first-time parents, Father Jamal and Mother Baraka. It spent the last couple of months behind the scenes, but is now out in his habitat daily, weather permitting. While an okapi may look somewhat like a zebra due to the black-and-white stripe patterns on its front and hind legs, the species found in Central Africa is actually the closest living relative to the giraffe.
Some young Marines who passed through the Los Angeles International Airport got an early holiday surprise. Rasha Goel takes us to a meal they won't soon forget.
It's one of the best meals they'll probably have for quite some time, and a memorable one. About 300 Marines who recently graduated from the School of Infantry from Camp Pendleton were treated to a feast at the Bob Hope United Service Organization's eighth annual Thanksgiving dinner at LAX.
It was very heartwarming because this is a great meal that we got in a long time. So it was very nice for the USO and everybody else to put this on for us.
Today is the first day of the rest of their life in the Marine Corps. They are going to places from here as close as 29 Palms, California, or as far away as maybe Germany, Okinawa, or maybe even Afghanistan.
The event was hosted by the United Service Organization, or USO, a nonprofit organization which helps lift the spirits and morale of American troops and their families. Mayor Eric Garcetti, who is also a lieutenant in the United States Navy Reserve, has himself experienced the generosity of the USO.
I've certainly been a proud recipient of USO hospitality across this country and around the world when I've deployed, when I've been out there. It is like meeting an old friend. You just see that sign when you're walking through an airport, or when you land someplace, you say, "Where's the USO?", and you know it's like coming home to family.
This dinner was even more unique, as the Marines also had the honor of being served food by the mayor himself.
When a lot of these Marines won't have any meal like this before they head off, it's our way of saying thanks. We're still a nation of war. It's a great way of us giving back.
It's just a lot of people to thank for their service today, as well as the troops who we're thanking for doing everything they're doing for our country.
The United Service Organization has been around since 1941, and could always use more volunteers to help give back to those who are giving so much. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
For more information on how to donate or become a volunteer at the USO here in Los Angeles, log onto bobhopeuso.com. And it's one of the largest holiday turkey giveaways here in the L.A. area. Anna Marcos takes us to the North Valley, where close to 3,000 big birds were given out.
You want to try to carry this? It's pretty heavy.
Councilmember Mitch Englander helped hand out some of the 2,800 turkeys, complete with all the trimmings at this giveaway. The North Valley Family YMCA put on the turkey drive to help needy families over the holidays.
When you know that you're making a difference in somebody's life, my Thanksgiving now, when I'm sitting with my family, I'll know that there's almost 3,000 families enjoying a Thanksgiving dinner that they otherwise wouldn't have had.
It was a full house at St. Stephen's Lutheran Church where the turkey drive took place. There were turkeys in carts, turkeys in boxes, turkeys on tables, along with recyclable bags full of all that other stuff that goes with turkey dinner.
This is gratitude month, and I'm very grateful that the church is having this for the community and for the people that really need it. I'm here to pass on my basket to my neighbor.
The YMCA started the giveaway five years ago with only 50 birds to hand out. Organizers are thrilled. They are now helping 2,800 families celebrate the turkey holiday.
Very happy. You can see that on my face. It's growing. That's the biggest thing, and I love it when people, we can help our people.
For some of those people, turkey will be just the first course.
Some tamales there and enchilada, you know, it helps a lot.
It has shaped up to be the most successful year yet for one of the largest turkey giveaways in the Southland. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
And if the turkeys didn't convince you, you know the holidays are upon us when Pershing Square opens downtown on ice. This marks the 16th year of the popular outdoor ice skating rink.
Breaking the ice has never been so much fun. The 16th year of the Department of Recreation and Parks's Downtown on Ice at Pershing Square kicked off with the chiseling and breaking of a snowflake ice sculpture to christen the Skating performances by the L.A. Ice Theater entertained students from inner-city youths who were invited to be the first patrons to grace the ice for the season.
For some of these children, it's their first time ice skating. And these children are the ones from our school that scored advanced on the California State Test, so this is kind of a reward for them.
And who better than two-time Olympic champion and four-time world champion Oksana Grishuk to hold their hands and guide them along the ice.
I talked to some of the kids there that I skated with, and I said, "How do you feel? How do you like it here?" And they're all like, "Oh, it's so great. We feel very happy and want to come back again."
And Downtown on Ice is happy to welcome back new and old patrons for this unique Los Angeles outdoor skating experience.
We are ready for winter. We have ice skating seven days a week. We have the Winter Concert Series with great fun music events. Snoopy will be down to visit.
So if you live in or are visiting Los Angeles this holiday season, lace up those skates and hit the ice.
And in this week's list of Things to Do, we give you more details on Downtown on Ice and on a free sneak performance also at the ice rink, as well as the L.A. Auto Show.
Downtown on Ice at Pershing Square is again open for skating this holiday season. In fact, it'll be open daily from now until January 20th. The hours of operation are 11:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. Mondays through Thursdays, and 10 a.m. to 11 p.m. Fridays to Sundays. However, the hours will change over Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years, so you'll want to check on those hours before heading out. Go to pershingsquareicrink.com. And Downtown on Ice will also host several special events this year, including a 15-minute preview of It's Christmas Snoopy on Ice on Tuesday, December 3rd. The free mini-sneak preview performance starts at 4:00 p.m. at the Downtown on Ice Rink, which is located at Pershing Square at 532 South Olive Street. Snoopy and the cast of the Knott's Berry Farm production will be also joined by guest star Ty Bablonia, a two-time Olympian and world champion. Again, go to pershingsquareicrink.com for details. The 2013 Los Angeles Auto Show will be open to the public at the Los Angeles Convention Center from Friday, November 22nd to Sunday, December 1st, and showcase nearly 100 exotic and classic cars from around the world. You'll get to check out Jaguars, Subarus, Porsche, Audi, Mini, and Maserati, to name a few. More than 20 world debuts are expected at the show, and more than two dozen green vehicles. The L.A. Convention Center is located at 1201 South Figueroa Street. Go to laautoshow.com, and that's a look at some upcoming Things to Do.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at ellicityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
Blumenfeld, Bonn, and Buscanos, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Carrasco, Correia, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Weston, Timmer, is present. A coram, Mr. President.
Excellent. Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. Mr. Fuentes is first, Mr. Weezer is the second, and next item.
Committal resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Carrasco is first, Ms. Martinez is the second. Next item, please.
Mr. President, it is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. If everybody in council chambers can please rise. And Mr. Ofero, if you can please lead us in the flag salute.
Place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much. Members, if I could please direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Items 1 through 7 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, and I believe items 1 is a commission appointment. Do we wish, does anybody wish to hold that appointment?
Mr. President, for item 1, the report has not been circulated yet, so that should be held on the desk.
Okay, we'll hold that on the desk for the report to be circulated. Items 2 through 7, members, seeing no members on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Number 8, forthwith on number 3, per Labange, without objection. That'll be the order, okay? Madam Clerk?
Items 8 through 19 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on those items, and close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Number 8 is an ordinance, I believe, as well, so is it this first or second reading?
First reading.
First reading, okay. Well, on 8, do we have any cards for any of these items?
Yes, cards on items 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, and 18.
Of course, okay. And do we have any particular members that want to call items 8, 9, 14, 16, 17, or 19? Special. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, just for the record, for item 9A, the address should read 6116 Colfax Avenue.
We'll vote with that technical correction. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go ahead and open the roll.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, of course.
Can...
That's your responsibility.
14 be placed on call, or special also. We're working out some language.
14, we'll go ahead and hold on the desk per Mr. Dion. Because we want him comfortable. With all of those remaining items, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, members, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Excellent, thank you very much.
And, Mr. President, item number 8, the ordinance will be held over to next week for a second reading.
Yes, great, excellent, thank you so much. And with that, I believe that takes us to presentations.
Actually, Mr. President, item 20 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
For now, we'll go ahead and hold that on the desk, yes. Mr. Labange?
Before we get into the presentations, can I introduce a special guest from our sister city of Berlin, Germany? Please welcome Misha Trumpa. He's a member of the fire department there. Misha, big hand, he's been here before, he loves this city, from our sister city of Berlin. Let's give him a warm welcome to Los Angeles. Thank you, Misha. Good job.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take some items now and hold off on the presentation for a moment, and we'll start with item 10. Called special for cards. Wayne from Encino.
Greetings to our German friends. Ein Konsolischmusst. Okay, so we have this congestion management program. I don't think it works. Drive down the 405, drive down Sepulveda Boulevard, they're tearing up every street, every freeway, shutting down every road. And then L.A. County is still putting these ticket boxes, these automatic cameras, around the metro stations that go through the San Fernando Valley in Mitchell-Englanders District, and he won't shut them off. How come the city of Los Angeles bans the cameras, and the DOT is still operating those cameras and costing people $400-$500 a ticket? That's not being addressed in this report, and it's causing a lot of congestion. One minute.
Wait, Wayne, wait up there for one moment, because I'm going to have you speak on the next item as well. Actually, we have no other cards on 10. Go ahead and jump right into 11 and 13 as well.
Okay. Number 11...
Since you have cards on both of those, 11, 13, and 15, those, you have cards on all three. So while you're there, in the interest of efficiency, we'll go ahead and speak on all three.
Well, that's good. Okay, 11, we have a, the MacArthur Foundation is giving out $107,000. For exactly what? To help the homeless. Yet there's something called administrative reserve, that's 70,000 of it. What is that? And the Housing Committee waived consideration of the above matter, so nobody knows, but it will automatically pass yes, because the chairs of the council members automatically vote yes on every vote, unless you push the red button, no.
If you can stay on the particular item, please.
Okay, we don't want to interrupt the stealing. Then we have item number 13, Dia de los Dead. I think people in Spanish can understand that the word is Dia de los Muertos. Why the hell don't you call it what it is? Dia de los Muertos. I mean, what is this Dia de los Dead? I mean, is that a, you know, is that a grateful dead revival? I mean, what is that? I think it's, I think it disparages the holiday, disparages the language that the holiday is from. Call it what it is. Dia de los Muertos. And then Self-Help Graphics Day? Okay, let's translate that into English. Tagging instructions. Tagging 101, right? We're going to teach people how to put graphics on walls. Well, you go down the, any freeway, the 110, even over in Paul Coretza's district with million-dollar homes on the freeway, they're right off of, right off of White Oak.
Stick to the actual item.
I am. I'm talking about graphics. And they're tagging this wall off the 101 off of White Oak every day. So we have plenty of graphics. We don't need any more. Get rid of the graphics. Then we get the best one. This is a doozy. Item number 15. We have a payoff here. $1,500,000 is contributed to the ZONE District. And also, of course, this voluntary donation comes with a zoning district change over on North Vine Street. Now, we've been down this North Vine Street thing before. Development projects never come out good on Vine Street. So take my advice, if you're a council member or a district, don't get involved in development projects on Vine Street, that earthquake zones, everything. And then we have another $850,000 from the same nice people who just happen to be giving money away for Hollywood residents for the development of off-site affordable housing. What is, what is off-site affordable housing? Could that be people living in campers on the street? We have a lot of that in the, in the city. $850,000 contributed. And of course, there is a zoning, redistricting, a zoning reclassification. Here's the question. What if the developer and the applicant didn't donate the money? Would they still get the zoning redesignation? What is the answer to that? It's a quid pro quo. That needs to be stopped. Our new mayor promised, Mayor Garcetti, it's not going to be the same City Hall. But here we have the same City Hall, the same crap. Vote no.
Great, thank you very much. Item 1 has been circulated, so we're going to go ahead, members, and take up items 1, items 10, 11, 13, and 15. If we can open the roll? Close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Those items were before us, we didn't have any cards.
10 ayes.
When we opened up the discussion on those particular items, please don't yell from the meeting, Sergeant, if you could. Thank you. On items 14, we'll go ahead and continue that one week till December 3rd without objection. And then we'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Martinez for presentation. Please, if you're going to yell from chambers, please go talk to the sergeant-at-arms. Again, that'll be the last warning, because that's the fourth warning now. It's disruptive, and at the decorum, we don't allow it. So if you want to go ahead and speak to the sergeant at the side, that'll be the final warning on that. Thank you. Ms. Martinez is up for a special presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, November 25th is International Day of the Elimination of Violence Against Women. Seven out of 10 women have experienced some form of violence in their lifetime. Violence takes many forms, physical, sexual, emotional, and mental. In 1999, the United Nations designated November 25th as International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women. Today, we have an opportunity for each person to recommit the ending, the harm being committed against women around the world. Global Girl Media is a nonprofit that was formed to empower... Global Girl Media is a nonprofit that was formed to empower girls through media from underserved communities around the world through media leadership training, bringing their powerful perspective to the global media stage. The training provided by Global Girl Media helps young women bring their own unique perspectives of their lives, their communities, and world events to the global web and social media community. Global Girl Media invests in girls to become their own agents of change, in bridging their gender digital divide, providing concrete skills with which to improve their own personal situations. They currently operate in four areas around the world, in Los Angeles, Chicago, Morocco, South Africa, with plans of future expansion. As part of their efforts to bring awareness to International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, Global Girl Media Morocco participants developed a documentary titled "Breaking the Silence: Moroccan Speak Out," a 30-minute documentary about harassment of women in Morocco. Colleagues, it is truly amazing and inspiring to see young women from around the globe find their voice and share their stories with the world. Through the power of the internet, we can connect with other girls from around the world and listen to their stories. Global Girl Media has given these girls a voice in their futures. On behalf of the City Council, I would like to recognize Global Girl Media for their work to help empower girls around the world and their mission to give women a voice. On behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition to Global Girl Media. We recognize on this occasion that wearing orange signifies the United Nations International Day of the Elimination of Violence Against Women, and we recognize your outstanding awareness in making sure that women around the world have a voice. Thank you very much.
All right, let's give her a round of applause, everyone. Fantastic, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, as well.
And I have a second recognition. I'd like to present a certificate of recognition in recognizing Rosio Ortega, who is here representing Global Media, as a newly elected board member of the organization. Rosio is currently a second-year student at Wellesley College in Massachusetts. She is a global... She participated in the Global Girl Media Program and has developed a passion for advocating for education as a way to help other women become independent and successful. After becoming involved with Global Media, Rosio became aware of the United Nations Foundation Grow Up. This campaign gives girls, American girls, the opportunity to become involved in campaigns to benefit women around the world and other adolescents as well. On November 17th, Rosio was recognized by the Fifth Annual Nick Knight Halo Awards, which celebrated real teens who are doing something amazing in their communities. She was... She won an award, and I want to recognize her efforts here by... Her efforts in increasing awareness of girls living in developing countries, safe health and education, something that she promotes every single day. I want to recognize her as well, and thank you, Rosio, for flying back from school to be able to represent Global Girl Media, as well as all her efforts and her award at the Teen Nick Awards. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to say thank you very much to Councilwoman Nuri Martinez and her staff members. Obviously, here the Global Girl Media reporters are here from Los Angeles, and we are very thankful that we are being honored today at LA City Hall. And we just hope that with the message that we're trying to send out to different parts of the world, that girls are empowered through the media and have access to education, and hope that there is a high female representation in this world to come. Thank you.
Fantastic, oh, thank you very much. All right, members, let's give them another round of applause. All right, we're going to turn our attention to the agenda once again, and we're going to take items 12 and 18 at the same time. We've got various cards on both of those. 12, 18, and 20, in fact. We'll vote separately on those, but we'll take the cards at one time. 20 is a closed item, but we have one card on that. So those are the cards that we've got in place. We already opened up the agenda items on those. For the record, we have a number of cards, some that have already satisfied public comment. Mr. Herman, we had one-on-one, we've already satisfied public comments, so we'll note that for the record. Jeanette, on item six as well, was public comment, was already satisfied. Kevin Modis also wanted to let you know on that, was already satisfied. We had one with no name and anonymous here on items 14, which was continued to December 3rd. And then we've got another one that was also deferred from Mr. Constituent. And then a number of cards that came in either after we took up the agenda items and actually closed the vote on those, and/or public comment was already satisfied on those as well. With that, we'll go ahead and take Larry Gross on item 12.
Good morning, Larry Gross with the Coalition for Economic Survival. Mayor Garcetti and Councilmember Parks successfully put forth this ordinance five years ago, and it's been extended every year since. Speaking in support of this item has become an annual holiday event for myself, and that's unfortunate, because it means that this law is still needed. The foreclosure crisis and the impact on hard-working families is an American tragedy. It's especially unjust for the forgotten victims, that being tenants. This law protects renters living in foreclosed, bank-owned, non-rent-controlled rental units. These are good tenants, they've done nothing wrong, they've paid their rent on time, but without this protection, these banks will likely evict them without reason, just because they unfortunately live in foreclosed rental property. When the city passed this law five years ago, the council provided needed national leadership in enacting the strongest tenant protections for foreclosures. This law has protected significant numbers of families from being unjustly evicted and needs to be extended today. While we believe this ordinance should be a permanent ordinance, a two-year ordinance, as is being proposed, is far better than one. Thus, if you pass this ordinance today, you won't see me next year, well, not at this issue at least. We urge you to move swiftly, pass this ordinance, and want to wish all of you and yours a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Right, no, thank you very much. And Juan, if you want to come on up for item 12? And you have two cards, if you want to speak on items 12 and item 20, we have both of those before us. 20 is a closed session item.
Anyway, this item is fantastic. You only extend protection to people for two years. People should be protected from these monsters, the banks. Didn't we bail the banks out? Why are you drowning the people? Why are you saving the butchers of the people, the banks? No bank should be in real estate. They already had their chances and blew it. Why are we not protecting the people? Why are we siding on the banks? Oh, because if the banks go out of business, a lot of people will lose their job. What is the job? To rip other people off. What a beautiful job the banks have, ripping everybody off and everybody voting... Wait a minute, nobody voted to save the banks. Obama did it on his own. And Obama was here having breakfast with the habby-nabbies in Beverly Hills. Go to hell, Obama, you're not doing your job, you're not protecting the people. You signed up to create a change, and you haven't done shit. You haven't done anything, Obama. And yeah, shit is protected.
If we can stick to the item.
Okay. The item is, why are the people being put under the banks, under the financial institutions, and under the rich and powerful assholes? We don't need that. We don't live in a communist country, and yet we have more jails than the communists. And the communists are more capitalists than we are. So, there you go, they're sucking it to you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, members, those items, except for 20, are before us. We'll hold 20, continue to hold that for a moment. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Great, thank you very much. For item four, I'd like to reconsider item four for another vote. So I'd like to open the roll for reconsideration on item four. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and vote on item four again. Sorry. If we can open the roll on item four. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, with that, members, Madam Clerk, where does that take us? Oh, we've got one card on... Another card on 18 and another one on 20. Sorry about that. So Sean on 18. We did have one other card, we can go ahead, let's do this, I apologize, Shawna, your card was buried under the paperwork here. We'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on 18, so you can speak on it, if you'd like to still speak on it. Absolutely, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Sean, please.
Item 18 is a good item, I support it.
Excellent, thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, one more card on item 20, Mr. Herman, item 20. Going once. Going twice. Okay. He passes. Item 20, then, is the last item, I believe, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, let me check in on that real quick, give me one minute. Okay, item 20, since it was approved in Budget and Finance Committee, unless any particular members have any questions or wish to go into closed session, but I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney first.
On this matter, I would advise that council take or give its direction to the city attorney in closed session.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn in a closed session for this item, recess in a closed session. So we'll recess in a closed session on this item. If we can ask everyone to leave council chambers, all council members plus one staff member to remain present, but the general public to leave council chambers. And we are done with the council agenda, just so you're aware, that those of you who are stepping out, we've concluded the entire council agenda with the exception of this item. And in general, thank you. All right, we are back in open session, and that takes us to general public comment. We've got several cards here. We'll wait for everybody to come back into chambers. Actually, John Walsh, while you're walking, and Mr. Herman, if you want to keep walking up to the microphone, you can keep coming up, and you've got cards in as well. Mr. Walsh, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you doing, John?
Oh, great.
Excellent.
Except when I went down to Hollywood and Vine, the Vine Street subway station was closed because of police activity. Or was it a suicide? John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, HollywoodHighlands.org. You want to see a picture of the mayor's boyfriend, go to HollywoodHighlands.org. And folks, it isn't, is a picture, his name, his website, and where he lives now, which is with the mayor. Is that true or false? And his name is? Go to our website. And he is awfully, awfully cute. Remember, there's no BS when it comes to me. It's there. Thousands and thousands of people all over the world are coming to see. It's nothing wrong with being gay. There's nothing wrong with having a boyfriend and a wife. But when the boyfriend's sister, Mr. Dake's sister, gets appointed as chairman of the Planning Commission because of a little pillow talk between him and the mayor, and she's totally unqualified, it's all on my website. And incidentally, everybody here knows what I'm talking about. Everybody in the press knows what I'm talking about. Everybody inside knows what I'm talking about. But there's only one place you can find the Glenn Dake story, and that's at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Confidential, with all the details, going back 13 years when Mr. Dake was, worked for, was a deputy of Garcetti. There's nothing wrong with being the gayest mayor in the largest, second-largest city in America. There's nothing wrong for it. In fact, we're all for it. But go take a look at Glenn Dake at HollywoodHighlands.org. And incidentally, whatever happened to Herb Wesson? He's been gone three weeks. Is it true that he's suffering from AIDS? HollywoodHighlands.org.
I respect all free thinkers and free speeches that people may give at this podium, but I certainly don't respect when they make statements, a personal note about anybody, wrong or right or whatever. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, and I think we all agree. Sean? Oh, Herman, go ahead. You're up. You're closest. That's fine.
Good morning. We should ban the leaf blowers. I'm going to keep saying this until you, until you guys do it. The leaf blowers are too, tired of leaf blowers. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I brought this turkey to represent to those who I might say are turkeys. But public meetings, who's ultimately in charge here? The people, the First Amendment right to fulfill their constitutional rights? What's going on? So I decided to say this. I love, I've had my fillers and wieners, and Mr. Wees are still not here. I find it all so amusing, we're live in Los Angeles. Mr. Speaker's sitting there speaking with a young lady. Why don't we? I find it all at City Hall in Los Angeles. And going back with the turkeys at City Hall, I say to you, let's give everyone a free turkey. Celebrate this great day at City Hall.
Okay, if we can, if we can keep, keep the voice down, we're not going to be yelling. Singing's one thing, if you call that singing. Okay, we can go ahead and cut off the mic, then, if he's going to not, if it's going to just be yelling. Thank you. Thank you. We're asking you not to yell, and I've said it three times, so we'll go ahead and... Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the next speaker, then. Wayne? Come on up. If we can shut the music off in the background, please, whoever's playing that.
Now, that was quality, free entertainment available for everyone to see. But the man has a right to speak. Musical paradigm is free speech. The Supreme Court ruled that many times. And here you are, you're suppressing free speech. You got all the money. You have the DWP charging exorbitant rates. Let's take a look, for example, I got a bill that I saw, and there's a chart on the DWP bill. It says maximum usage in the last 12 months under 1 kilowatt. Yet, they're placing the entire bill based on a lie. They're claiming it's 4 kilowatts. The result is, in an 800-square-foot office per month, before you turn on the light switch, the DWP steals from small businesses $50 a month before you even use an ounce of electricity. Every small business is being destroyed by outrageous and false DWP billing, exorbitant and false sewer service charges, exorbitant and false basis for charging those fees, and they're causing homelessness. People who are elderly, people on fixed incomes that paid all of their lives, they cannot afford to turn the lights on. And you guys don't pay attention, talk, chew gum, eat, and then deny one of the peasants a lousy two minutes to speak. We're sick of this city. Screw all of you. Choke on the turkey. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind Thanksgiving words. You have a nice holiday, too. Juan? Please don't yell in council chambers. We'll start your clock if you want to start talking from back there. I don't have a problem with that, though.
You are callous. You cause homelessness. You go around the city robbing everybody with your tow trucks. And you want us to have a happy Thanksgiving and to give you happy awards? Are you stupid? You are stupid. But the people are worse because they don't come and tell you that you're stupid, that you did not get hired to punish the people for anything. You got hired, oh, to wash each other's hands. And who's that, who's that guy? Hey, Mike?
If we can, please, address it to general public comment.
Why is he interrupting my speech?
General public comment. He's not, you have the microphone.
Why does he have the right to talk right through my speech?
Anybody has the right to talk on the sidelines with staff?
We don't have the same rights when I speak. I don't lie, you're right there on top of me.
If you can stick to the purview of this body.
Yeah. The thing is, the right to speak. And you are not to interrupt the people. The people rule over you. This is in the Constitution. You're violating the Constitution. The people have rights over you. Supposedly, we vote you in, but it's not the way it happens. You vote each other in. You count the votes according to the way you want to. So the people have really very few rights, and you keep giving the kids in schools all this bullshit about how, what a beautiful society, what freedom of speech, oh, all this democracy. And then you're making deals with the Chinese and the other communist countries, and, you know, they become more capitalistic than you because they know how to use your formula.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Ron?
Good morning.
Yes, good morning. My name is Ron Ulrich, and I want to talk about the wireless radiation issue.
Let me just, I don't want to, I'm going to hold your time for one moment. The other members that have the shirts up, did you, you have cards as well? Is it Kevin and Patrick? Is that correct? Did you wish to speak as well? Okay. And Jeanette, is Jeanette there as well? Okay, so we'll have you guys come up. Or do you want to speak together at the same time?
Just one after the other.
One after the other. You got it. Okay, excellent.
Yes, I want to talk to wireless radiation issue, which I'm very sensitive to, you know, and very electromagnetic sensitive from cell towers, phone smart meters, I can't be around them that much, I get dizzy, headaches, high blood pressure, it's difficult to stand, I lose energy, and it's difficult to function and even survive in this atmosphere. And the smart meters are going to be installed soon in our neighborhood, and even if I opt out, my neighbors are going to have them, and they're at a distance that are too close to me. I would be affected by it, and the cell towers that are two blocks away, and if they come any closer, I would literally be forced to move away from my house. We've been a long residence in our area, been there since 1948, 65 years. My mom is 88 years old, and I take care of her, and it's, and, you know, and where can I move to? You know, since this wireless is basically everywhere in the L.A. area. And of course, there's more increase in brain cancers, and with people with phones and brain tumors. And there is a science to this also, because, you know, from MRI, basically, the normal color is blue. If you're on, if you're on a cellphone, it goes red, so your brain is heating up. You can put your, you know, blood on a slide, and you basically, there is cell death after a few minutes. And I've tested radiation coming from the towers, cell phones, and meters in my area with the acoustometer. There are extremely high levels, as much as 100 times higher, that would be considered safe for a sensitive person. And anyways, I've tested this in areas, they're extremely high, and I'd like to invite you to come with me for a tour in my neighborhood and in my vista, especially my council in Bonin here, and I will show you the high radiation levels with my acoustometer. Okay? Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Kevin? Is it Modus?
Yeah, hi, my name's Kevin Modus, and I'm sorry that a lot of the councilmen aren't here today, but I'd really like to speak to each and every one of you, because this issue of the health effects from microwaves used in wireless is a very serious and a very real issue. And the information you're getting from your health and safety department is coming from OSHA, and OSHA is getting their, their information from the FCC. And the FCC, and you can check on it very easily, is composed of wireless executives, and the new FCC chairman is the previous main lobbyist for the wireless industry, and the previous CEO of the Wireless Trade Organization. They have no interest in looking at health effects, but people are really getting sick. People are getting electro sensitivity, like this gentleman here who just spoke, neurological disorders like headaches, nausea, difficulty sleeping, headaches. And the biggest, largest group of research is in increasing the risk of cancer, and when the experts look at the evidence, they won't say there's no evidence, and there are thousands of studies showing cancerous effects from wireless microwaves. What they'll say is they used a weighted approach. And what that means is, they looked at all the studies, and for every study that a non-wireless industry group finds that the risk of cancer goes up, the wireless industry funds five of their own. And when the Italian Supreme Court looked at the funding sources and the quality of the research, the studies that designed around the problem, they were able to find that cell phones can cause cancer, and all wireless radiation can cause cancer, and we need to take this very seriously. The World Health Organization has classified the microwaves used in wireless as a Class IIb carcinogen, and if you would, if you would consult with John Sammett, who's the director of global health at USC, he would tell you that we cannot guarantee that these microwaves are safe, particularly for children. The wireless initiatives, the Wi-Fi in Los Angeles and LA Unified...
I'm going to cut you off, but we've got the other speakers here as well, and I've got to keep the time consistent. But thank you very much. Patrick? Patrick Moore. Good morning.
So sorry. Good morning. As we are starting to hear, the differences between the way the FCC and the World Health Organization look at Wi-Fi is quite radically different. The FCC has set up a standard saying that if Wi-Fi doesn't actually cause a cooking of the brain, that's the point at which they consider it to be damaging, at the point that it starts to heat up the brain one degree and cook it. Well, the World Health Organization and almost every other scientific lobby in the world has found that electromagnetic radiation affects cells and causes degeneration in the DNA. So it's a radical, radical difference. So here in America, we're looking at a paradigm deciding if these things are safe based on what is really fraudulent and faulty science. And if you could look at the larger scope of the research being done in the world, you'll find that the reason why they banned cell phones for children in England, and the reason why they're cutting back and really questioning the expanding use of these Wi-Fi and WiMAX systems around the world, is because even the subtlest amount of electromagnetic radiation distorts the DNA and disrupts cell growth, and that causes cancer. We can't let this become the next asbestos. Governments for 20 or 30 years approved asbestos, put it in public schools, and created a massive wave of cancer around the world. We're doing the same thing with Wi-Fi right now, and you guys are on the cutting edge. You know, Austin and certain cities are a few years ahead, but as you guys... You know, Austin and certain cities are a few years ahead, but as you guys mandate a Wi-Fi system through the city, you're creating a potential health disaster that you will be held responsible for in the decades to come. The science is out there right now. There's an incredible film right now called Take Back Your Power. If you could spend two hours and do some, some skimming research, you'll find yourself questioning the safety and efficiency of putting in a Wi-Fi system citywide when children and elderly are particularly sensitive to this, but they're finding that nobody is safe from the effects of Wi-Fi on the brain and the heart and the cells and the DNA. And that's something I think we really should be considering at this time. Thank you so much.
All right, no, thank you. And Jeanette, final speaker for today.
Greetings, everybody. My name is Jeanette Perez. I am here speaking on behalf of the people of California, also in regards to the citywide Wi-Fi rollout or the possibility thereof. My concern is the issue of privacy and what is going to happen with the information that the city is going to be collecting on the people. We know that these systems collect information every, every couple seconds. And so this means that somebody, some organization, some agency that's contracted, is going to be monitoring what's going on in the homes of the people living here in the city of Los Angeles. So my question to you is, who's going to make money off of that information? Who are you going to sell that information to? Who will be prosecuted with that information? Who's, who's privacy, who's Fourth Amendment? Who's Fourth Amendment? I'm sorry. We, this is, this is very important to me. My, my specialty is education. I've worked in public and private sector, and my, my interest is access. And how will, how will access be limited in various ways with this rollout? So we ask you to please do the research. We're doing the research. We're holding you accountable to the safety of the people and the children of the city. Please do your jobs diligently. We do care about the health of the people here. We are, we are facing grave radiation coming from Fukushima. I'm not sure if the city has addressed that here on the West Coast. We are a city on the West Coast, and now with an increasing technology of Wi-Fi, we have more cancer increasing in the people every day. So please do your jobs. Thank you.
Right, excellent. No, thank you. Seeing no other common cards, we actually had a couple common cards, I believe, come in, but pursuant to Rule 11, once we start an item, again, we'll go ahead and note and file that we received those cards. Do we have any announcements from any colleagues? Any announcements? Seeing none, any adjourning motions? We do. If everybody in council chambers can please rise. And Madam Clerk, do we have any motions and postings for referral?
Yes, council has motions for posting and referral.
We'll go ahead and post and refer those, and that clears the desk? Yes, okay. That clears the desk. So, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of a literary icon in Los Angeles. Poet Wanda Coleman died Friday after a long illness. She was 67. She had been a key figure in the literary life of Los Angeles for decades and helped transform this city's literature and helped put us on the map in terms of poetry. She was a finalist for the National Book Award for her poetry collection Mercurochrome. It's a tough one to pronounce. She was born and raised in Watts, and she often wrote about issues of race, class, poverty, and disenfranchisement. She began writing as a young woman, and she was part of the Watts Writers Workshop that began after the 1965 riots. She was also involved with Beyond Baroque in Venice, and I'm very proud that her words are etched permanently into the walls of one of the buildings at Venice Beach. She was a poet, so rather than eulogize her by saying what she did, I just wanted to read a bit of what she wrote. A very short poem. "In that other fantasy where we live forever, we were never caught. We partied the southwest, smoked it from L.A. to El Dorado. Worked odd jobs between delusions of escape, drunk on the admonitions of parents, parsons, and professors, driving faster than the road or law allowed. Our high-pitched laughter was young, heartless, and disrespected authority. We could be heard for miles in the night, the grand canyon of a new manhood, womanhood discovered like the first sighting of Mount Wilson. We rebelled against the southwestern wind. We got so naturally ripped, we sprouted wings, crashed parties on the moon, and howled at the earth. We lived off love. It was all we had to eat. When you split, you took all the wisdom and left me the worry." We lived off love. It was all we had to eat. A great line, a loss for Los Angeles, such a brilliant, brilliant poet. Thank you.
All right, no, thank you very much. We all remember when she was here in council chambers with us and have, for some of us that are fortunate enough to have her autograph book as well, it'll be treasured. Thank you very much. Mr. Fuentes has a special guest with us here today as well.
Hi, my name is Eliana Fuentes. And happy Thanksgiving.
All right, let's give her a round of applause. Excellent, thank you very much. Clearly, well, I'll keep that remark. Ms. Martinez, did you have adjourning motion? Mr. O'Farrell? Well, you can rock, paper, scissors.
Thank you. Colleagues, I rise today on behalf of our colleague Gil Sedia, who's unable to be here today, adjourning in the memory of Jack Ching Lee, who lived the American dream and was grateful to his adopted country and for God's blessings. Mr. Lee was dedicated to his family and friends. Jack taught his children, grandchildren, others, that family first, never forget your roots, help others who are less fortunate, and always give back to your community. Jack died peacefully at home in La Canyada, Flint Ridge, on November 22nd. He was 88 years old. Jack is survived by Betty, his wife of 59 years, children Martin, Scott, and Jennifer, and five grandchildren. Born in Guangzhou, China, in 1925, Jack immigrated to the United States in 1947, living in San Francisco until he found his way to Los Angeles for business opportunities. In 1950, Jack was drafted into the United States Army and stationed in Germany. He was honorably discharged in 1952. Mr. Lee was an entrepreneur, business owner, and community and civic leader. His many business activities included the family-owned Yi Xing Chong Market, importing canned food products from Taiwan, food manufacturing, developing real estate, and co-founding the first state-chartered Chinese-American savings and loan, First Public Savings Bank. Knowing that Chinese-Americans were underserved by most financial institutions, Jack started First Public with the goal of helping others achieve the dream of homeownership. Jack's civic activities included serving as one of the first Asian-American members of the State of California's Economic Development Advisory Council, Director of Los Angeles Convention and Visitors Bureau, and a member of the Los Angeles Mayor Tom Bradley's Blue Ribbon Committee. He was honored by the city and county and state, as well as many other organizations. Jack was also a past president of the Lee Family Association and Chinese Chamber of Commerce, and a member of the Chinese-American Citizens Alliance. Mr. Lee, rest in peace.
May he rest in peace. Mr. Labonge.
Mr. Lee used to live in Silver Lake before he moved north, and a great family. I knew his sons, and his daughter still lives in Silver Lake, great architect, real family and inspirational man, lived a good, long life. I'd like to second it, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, that'll be all members as well. No, please, thank you very much. Ms. Martinez.
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in the honor of Mr. Enrique Ochoa, who was born on June 30th, 1936. He was the second of 13 children. As a young man, Mr. Ochoa began dating Abigail Ponce. The strength of their relationship was immediately tested because in 1961, similar to his father who participated in the Brasero program, Mr. Ochoa came to this, to the United States to work in the fields. Over the next 14 years, Mr. Ochoa worked the fields that were rooted in the San Fernando Valley, in the fields and farms in Mission Hills and San Fernando. And every year for 14 years, Mr. Ochoa went back to Mexico to see his family and to visit Abigail. Finally, in 1975, Enrique Ochoa and Abigail Ponce were married. However, they remained apart for four more years, and Enrique returned to the United States to work and send money home. Finally, in 1973, Mr. Ochoa was able to bring his wife, Abigail, and their daughter, Patricia, to the United States. Mr. Ochoa continued to provide for his family, working the fields, and eventually moving up the produce industry to become a machinist at the Paramount Citrus Plant across from the San Fernando Mission. With his family reunited, Mr. Ochoa was blessed with two more children, Claudia and Carlos. In 1986, as a result of his hard work and his sense of responsibility as a provider, Mr. Ochoa was able to purchase a home for their family in Silmar. Mr. Ochoa survived by his wife, Abigail Ochoa, three children, Patty Ochoa, Claudia Ochoa, and Carlos Ochoa. May Enrique Ochoa, a good and honest man, rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labonge.
Lived a long life, Ray Willsley. Coach, University of California, Berkeley, led our coach in Oakland, and then Los Angeles Raiders. As an assistant coach, you have to really be a great teacher, because that's where it's all done. He was inducted into the Orange County Sports Hall of Fame in the 1990s. He survived by his daughter, Coach Ray Willsley.
Rest in peace. Thank you very much. Any other members? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Be safe out there. Thank you, colleagues.